First item, place to call meeting order first. First item is approval of the agenda. Motion by Dan, second by Wade, we resolve with approve the amended agenda dated December 18th, 2017 as presented and circulated. And the amendments are?
Under 8.0 consent agenda, items number four, seven, nine, 10, and 11 have been added under 9.0 regular agenda, we circulated that report. And there are additional payables for consideration tonight.
All right, any other discussion? Home favor? Next item is disclosure of pecuniary interest. Any member of council has a pecuniary interest, declare now or submit in writing to the clerk. I'll be submitting a pecuniary interest declaration in matter of Shelburne District Fire Department budget, since my son is one of their members. Is there any less? See, none will move on, minutes previous meeting. By Wade, second by Dan, we resolve with approve minutes from the regular council meeting held December 4th, 2017 as presented and circulated. Any discussion on the minutes? That meeting? No discussion, home favor? This is Carrie. That's going to bring us to question period. Is there any questions? Kimberly?
Two questions. When exactly did the NOLEF enter off of?
Volume three.
Thank you. When did that actually go in? And how effective has it been so far?
When did it begin?
When did it go in?
Okay. Is there any members staffing up out there with the meeting? We're waiting on, we're waiting on a signage and flashing lights, those kinds of things. See the flashing lights are in.
It's been about two weeks.
At least two weeks ago, we had council, two weeks ago was in at that point.
But we're not involved in the enforcement of, that would be a police services question.
So no feedback.
The fact of this is unknown.
Okay, thank you.
So, Police Service Board does meet tomorrow night at 5:30. If you wanted to send in that question or public meetings, I'm sure you can hear.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Last call for questions. Okay, closed question period, we move on to delegations. First delegation is Sherri Gray from the Dufferin Federation of Agriculture.
I'm not Sherri. I'm Bill. I'm the chair of the County Federation of Agriculture. I've got word Grant, we're here for the grants are yours.
One more, Bill. Got more over here.
How do you spell? McCauchee.
Want a couple, man? Two more. Five, really? Must be. Good stuff. Sure.
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 You want your oxy?
Yeah, I know.
So I said Gord's with me tonight. Gord is our, one of our field persons with, with the Federation of Egg. And we're an organization that just had its 75th anniversary in the county, so we've been around for quite a while. And we represent more than 500 farmers in the county and represent egg. So we have a little booklet here, and we just put a few facts together on, on how important egg is to the local economy and to Shelburne as well. And certainly Shelburne has a pretty deep history in egg and a lot of businesses that are egg related and egg based. And a fair bit of your population is, were farmers or are farmers. Certainly, egg is the biggest economic driver in the province at this point in time. And we just want to share some things with you. So you can peruse the booklet at your leisure, but certainly we're the biggest stewards of the land in Dufferin, and we take that pretty serious to make sure that we leave it in better shape than when we got it. Some of the commodities that are big here in Dufferin, certainly cattle and calves, so those are beef calves, beef cows. And that's the amount of total gross, net gross farm receipts that are listed there. Dairy's a big one, certainly potatoes, soybeans, and then we've got cultivated corn, hogs. I'm a sheep farmer, and the barn's pretty small for sheep, so it's not really all. And then we-
But this fits an industry to watch.
It's coming very long, yeah. We did some pie charts because I guess we wanted to give, give everybody a bit of an idea of what kind of investment that producers have. So we've got beef cows there, so an investment for one beef cow is over $1,100, almost $1,200 a cow per year is what farmers have invested. And if you're driving by your acre of corn, there's over $500 invested in an acre of corn. That's it there, so. This summer was a pretty tough year on the corn crop, because there wasn't too much sun or heat in the first part of, first part of the year. So it was certainly a loser this year. Yields were about 120 bushels or so in this area of almost grade two corn, which is not great stuff. So there was no money made in Dufferin and the corn business this year, with money lost. Certainly, egg is a pretty significant employer in the, in the county and in the province as well. And certainly, our biggest, biggest crop here actually is hay. There's over 18,000 hectares of hay, and that certainly goes hand in hand with the beef industry, because it's pretty much forge based and with sheep and other roomans as well. So Gord, have you got any other?
Well, certainly, I think it's important that we outline how big the industry is. I know certainly, having tried to do retail in a small community, you can get kind of stuck on the main street stuff, because that's who you run into on a day to day basis, but there's a lot happening on the back concessions, and it's big dollar value. And one of the documents that we refer to right from the back is that OFA has been wanting to work fairly closely with municipalities to get you to think about the decisions that you make and how they impact one of your biggest, biggest industries. And the checklist that's been developed, you can refer to our website to see that. The one thing, we usually put up a slideshow, but I didn't, didn't bring it along, because I'm not too sure where we're going to project that night, but it's just as well, and we can send you a copy of it. The one thing in the back of it that isn't mentioned is the fact that OFA does go to bat for municipalities, rural municipalities at every opportunity. For years and years now, we have been asking the treasurer to do something about the funding available to municipalities. And we do work closely with both the Western Ordinance Caucus and Eastern Ordinance Caucus on a number of issues, so I think that's important to outline. I guess the only other thing that's probably most recent would be, Bill had mentioned that nearly half the ground in Dufferin is stewarded by people such as Bill, right, owned by farmers. And I think that's recently been important, and important for you in Shelburne, in that you've got some wells, who's, under the Clean Water Act, the wellhead protection area reaches way out past the boundaries of Shelburne. And we've already been quite proactive working with the risk management official and some members that are going to be custodians of those sorts of areas. So we're, we're watching that closely and certainly are a willing steward in terms of looking and caring for those resources. So I think that's about the only thing I could think, Bill.
Yeah, the only, the only other thing that's happened just recently is talk of expanding the green belt into, into this area as well. So that will certainly have an impact on expansion of Shelburne and other places.
So it certainly will, and we just got that information, I think this is early, last week, week before. So I guess we're still digesting what the impacts would be to Shelburne as far as expanding green belt. Is there anything you gentlemen need from us? You know, we have, like we have one farm in town limits, Shelburne, but Jeff and I sit on county council, and there's a message we can help promote, we're more happy to do that.
I think just paying attention to things like the checklist for municipalities and what, what things trip farmers up, probably one of the biggest things, not in this area, but there's been an announcement that there's a lot of interest in high speed rail, but the, the impact of that cutting across subwest in Ontario will be very significant for a lot of, a lot of farm families. And we understand the need for improved transportation, and any of us that has installed in part of the 401, coming and going in the GTA area realizes how transportation needs to be improved. Not sure if high speed rail is getting into London another 10 or 15 minutes sooner, at the cost that it'll be cutting across farmland. And this will almost be like putting a wall across farmland because of the speed involved in the, it'll reduce the number of level crossings. So that'll have significant impact, and for the rural municipalities, because sometimes you need to get an ambulance or a fire engine to the other side of the track. And we're really, really concerned at this point about things like high speed rail. So just, doesn't apply to Dufferin, but it's, it's things like that, that if you see things coming across, if you know, if you refer to the checklist, think about agriculture and what its impact might be, even though you're dealing with mostly residential issues here. The, the reach, or what you can do to preserve one of your sectors, your economic sectors is, can be really important.
Well, with all kinds of transportation too, because things like roundabouts, not big enough, not here, but in places south of here, and you can't get farm equipment around them, and not like you have a whole lot of traffic through town, but I'm sure you have some. We try and avoid town if we can. We don't just drag down the middle town, piss everybody off. But you know, we've got to get through sometimes, and you know, if we can't get through, you can't get through, right? So it's important, it's kind of uninhibited somehow.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any questions, council, for these gentlemen? No questions. All right.
If there are, if there is anything, just, just let us know through, through Sherri, and she can pass it on. And we'd like to open up a dialogue with all the councils for sure, that, you know, so we can look together on whatever issues are, are right there.
No, sounds good. Appreciate it.
Okay. Do you need, some of you?
Motion by Dan, second by Wade, we resolve council receives delegation information from the Dufferin Federation of Agriculture as presented. Any discussion? Home favor? Carrie? Next we have John Usheroff, and he's going to talk just about poverty reduction in Dufferin County. Welcome, John.
Thank you very much. And I'll hand these out before I forget. Which I did at one community, the Grand Valley, I forgot to hand them out, and I had to go back and put them in their mail slot, so. Thank you very much for having us over, and hopefully we can enlighten you a little bit as to what's going on with the task force on poverty reduction in Dufferin County. At first sight, we see Dufferin County as a very healthy, wealthy community, and there's not much problems with health, with poverty, but that's not necessarily the case. And when we look at poverty, what is poverty? It's basically, what we're using is the definition put forward by the United Nations, and I think you all have a copy of that, no sense me reading it, but that basically says that we should all have the necessaries of life to be able to live a decent life, not necessarily in riches, but at least have enough food and shelter and clothing. How does poverty present itself in Dufferin? Well, it's hidden by a great measure, unless you're in the industry, and then it's a different Income and housing prices are above provincial averages. Didn't used to be that way for all of Dufferin, but it's getting increasingly more expensive north of number nine. It used to be, once you were in Mona and Mulmer, they were the expensive properties, and then you went into the have-not townships, and things drastically reduced, but that's not the case. So our mission here today is to try and enlighten you on that, and we can't undertake and do much about anything unless we understand it and accept that, that there is a real issue at hand. And why should we care? I mean, we're doing all right, right in this room, but if I was to go count around and pick out one out of every seven and say, "Well, you're living on the edges, people," you'd probably be surprised. And it costs us a lot of money. Dufferin County in 2016, which was last year, spent $4.2 million on only social assistance. This coming year, 2018, we're expecting to pay out $4.7 million. That's a lot of money. And the estimated impact on socioeconomic disparities in the health system is about 20% of all its spending due to poverty. So as you can see, it's, it's costly, very costly. Some, of course, we can't do anything about. There's other things that we probably really could do something about. And then I'd like to draw your attention to the last statement on this slide. If I could get the help I need, I wouldn't be in this situation. And I think we should all look at that and say, "What can we do to make some changes?" And it's not just money. There's other things that are a direct result of poverty. And when you look at the bottom of this slide, you'll see that McMaster University did a study and found a 21-year difference in life expectancy of people that are in poverty and the wealthy people that are doing very well. Thank you very much. Simple facts, one in 10, or about 6,000 people in Dufferin live in poverty. And I'm sure that that hits you all as a bit of a surprise. As we will see in the next slide, the money that is paid out to people with social assistance does not really come up to what Canada declares is necessary to live a reasonable life and accommodate your necessities at $18,000 per year for a standard of living. And now they're going to redo that, and if you really want to have a closer look at this, again, there's a good statement at the bottom of this slide, but maybe you may also want to have a look on the YouTube's, and everybody's on the internet today, and try and pull up a movie called I Daniel Blake. And I'll leave it at that, but it gives you some insight what some people have to go through. Why don't they just get a job? That's a pretty standard statement, pretty standard question a lot of people use. Well, some could do that if there were jobs around. A lot of them can't, because for whatever reason, they're unable to work, of health, physical disabilities, or in different aspects of their existence, that they are not employable. And that is not always true, because if you take people that hit the 50, 55-year range, I don't know, somehow employees think that the younger generation has a lot more to offer. And I'm not really sure if that's true. Realities of the government measures, and this is how poverty is measured here in Canada, and they don't call it the poverty line, they call it a low income measurement. And they figure that if you, as a single person, earn 19, well, you're probably okay. They're not going to help you. But the market measure basket of existence, you might say, is calculated at 17. It doesn't leave you a whole lot of room for buying, you're supposed to, a Christmas And when you work this out, that comes as a 25th percentile of the weight scale that we use. Not 50, not 45, 25%. Then we have the cycle of poverty. And I'm very happy to say, I've got some reinforcements with me today, and she will address that when I'm finished talking here. But it's something I think you should really pay a lot of attention to and study as to how this works. Once you're in this situation, where do you get off? You're stuck. Poverty and homelessness. One, almost one in every five household experience serious housing affordability. And this one really gets me. Youth ages 16 to 24 make up 20% of the homeless population. And that should not be, in my opinion. These people are neither in school, they're not in training for any position or, or any job vocation, and they're not at work. They're roaming the streets. There's a lot of things I think that could be done there, but that is for my next round, probably in May or June, when we will dig a little deeper than that, I hope. Poverty and food insecurity. You can see for yourself, again, one in 10 households are food insecure. The Orangeville Food Bank last year went through, went through 88,000 pounds of food. I think it was two weeks ago. Yeah, it was two weeks ago. They had 84 people attend the food bank in one week. I know I'm not painting a very good picture here, but that is reality. And what are the county pressure points? Well, they're, all of them, housing, aging in place, social assistance rates, precarious employment, 70% of our people have to go outside the county to get decent jobs. We have to address that one too. Right in our own backyard, here's another good picture. 20% have not completed high school. 6% of babies are born under a healthy weight. 8% of residents are food insecure. 11% of households are living in core housing need. 10% living in poverty. 33% of people, or of the children vulnerable to at least one school readiness domain. 7% are unemployed, and I cannot figure that one out. That's a statistic number, I got to use that, but it's higher than that, I am positive. 11% of the youth I said were in either education, employment, or training. But 70% have a strong feeling of, of belonging to the community. And that's good, but if you can't begin to meet, that doesn't feed your family very What we need to do to address this? Well, find local champions, and I guess I'm one of them, but we need more. We want all of you people to be champions for this. And when you go to Good Roads and AMO, address these things with the different ministers down there, try and get some appointments, or hammer them at the bear pit session and drive the issue home. We got to remove the stigma, and that's, this is an impossible thing for NEAR to do. And we got to use a multi-pronged approach, because there's a lot of issues that have to be addressed here. The cost of doing nothing is too expensive. When you look at that, it's 50 nights approximately to put somebody up if they haven't got a home. When they get into trouble, it costs you $118,000 a year to incarcerate them. And if they're sick, then it costs you even more, $730,000 a year to have them in a medical facility such as a hospital or something like that. The truth is, poverty reduction is a good economic investment, but also a complex challenge. So I hope you will take this on. I hope you will read these slides again to refresh your memory and think about what you can do. There's a lot of things that we can't do ourselves within this council chamber, but that we can put pressure on others to do things. And if you want to discuss that, we can do that, but at that, I'll leave it there for now. You know, all I'll say is the hydro cost for your heat and hydro, and this is just hydro. So, as leaders, what can we do? What do we need to consider? You can have a look at that page and really think about it and say, "Okay." You can have a look at that page and really think about it and say, okay, if I was on the other side, what would I want you guys to do? What would I want them to do to help me? With that, we'll go back to that other slide which was number, a nice belt there, and I'm gonna let Shelley address that. She's got more experience.
So, hi Shelley. I'm Shelley Doherty and I've lived in Debrin County for approximately twenty years and I've also worked for the County of Debrin for fifteen years. And I am on the Debrin County Poverty Reduction Task Force. And I've come to speak about John Givell's stats. So I've come to speak more as a frontline person. So I worked at the food bank for fifteen years now. I was actually run out of this very room at one point. We had a lot of food stored in a different room and we interviewed clients out there. But yeah, so fifteen years I've worked for the food bank. And one of the slides John said, John read, it said that poverty is hidden. So in my seat, where I sit, it's not hidden. I see it when I work at the food bank once a week, sorry, once a month and sometimes more. I see it in my job when I work with children in children's services and how it is impacting them and our families. Last Thursday night, I worked the, I did my regular shift at the food bank. We served eighteen families. And that doesn't sound like a lot, but that's not eighteen people, that's eighteen families. A lot of these people had five or six children and they can't feed them. Under the guidelines of our food bank, you're allowed to use our food bank once a month. So it's supposed to be originally, it was meant as just to help you through a little bit of a rough time. So you've got enough food for maybe three or four days. What we're finding now is it's just not enough. We're just not needing the need. I have people coming back and calling, calling me or calling the food bank saying they need to come and make a second visit. So our guidelines say once a month, but how do you turn somebody away? So I mean, you say it's hidden, it's not hidden. Some of these people are neighbors, some have been coworkers, and the stigma is very much there. So when they walk in and they see that their friends are doing their interviewing, they don't want to come back. So and some people don't come in, just for that reason. And a lot of the stories I hear is it's either, as John said, and it's true, it is either groceries or electricity. So last Thursday was a really tough, a really tough night for us. We were there for a good three hours. And I think when we were done, everybody sat down and so this is the first time that we really felt, wow, this community is really struggling and we need to help, we need to do, we need to do something, something serious. Food banks are great, they're kind of like a, they're, they're not a solution. So what is the solution? This is why we're inviting people to this community summit in January. The more people we get out to the summit, the better. This needs to be brought up to local, different levels of government and we need to get people's attention. So, working with children, I was looking at this cycle of poverty. So if you read it, it begins with the inability to save. A lot of families say, you know, I got derailed by one or two big bills that they weren't imagining that they would have to pay for, and that's what got them into using the food, the food bank. So in children's services, when we take care of children, in order for children to do well, there's four foundations that have to be in place. One is belonging, engagement, expression, and wellbeing. So belonging being that you feel connected to people, engagement, that you're fully engaged and you're participating with your community, with people. Expression is that you're being heard. This is all needed for children to learn and grow well. And the last one, wellbeing, that's basic physical and emotional wellness. And if you look at that cycle of poverty, none of those four foundations are in there. And that's not just for children. When I was looking at this, the that and our four foundations of how we want our children to do well in this community, one in five children in Canada live in poverty, and that includes Debrin County. So that's a, that's a big wake-up call. So when I have sixty-five children walk into the early years center on every, any given morning, we do the math, and a lot of the families that use the early years center also use the food bank. And a lot of those people come and ask, they come, as I said before, and they, they use it two, three times. We have an emergency system put in place. Right now, actually, as I speak, there are volunteers down at the food bank unpacking lots of donations that have been brought in at the Christmas time. Right now is a wonderful time, we have a very giving, wonderful community. And we have tons and tons of food down there that they're unpacking and it's all by volunteers. But it needs to be more than just a volunteer committee that keeps the people in this, in this community well-fed. So, something that I think would stop the cycle of poverty when I was reading this and that I feel is a right for every child, for every person, is a good education. So if a child gets a good education, hopefully they can break that cycle. And in order to get a good education, a child needs to be well-fed. Our kids can't go to school hungry because they won't learn if they're in school hungry, hence the breakfast programs. So, and the great thing about those programs is anybody is welcome, so the stigma is erased. So my kids can enjoy it, your kids can enjoy it, the children who have not had breakfast and don't have food at home can enjoy it. The whole stigma is erased, which is a wonderful thing. At the early years centers and at the county level, under children's services, we're looking at that. Maybe it's, maybe for us at the early years, it's as simple as putting out a bowl of fresh fruit every single morning. So we know that kids that are coming in that center can help themselves and parents too to food. So just something to think about, so, for our children's sake and to hopefully break the cycle of poverty or to get some serious talk about this, not just handing out groceries lots a month. It fills bellies, but it doesn't stop, that's not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for either Donna or Shelley?
Well, first of all, I'd just like to thank Shelley and all the other volunteers at the food bank. Shelley said she's been working at the food bank for the last fifteen years, but in fact, she's a volunteer at the food bank, so she clearly doesn't, this isn't work for Shelley. And all, the whole food bank is run by volunteers, there's not a single paid employee for at least the Shelley and Food Bank. So I'd like to thank them and acknowledge them. I'd like to commend the anti-poverty task force as well. It's a very hard-working task force, they meet regularly. We've looked at the county's priorities, there are subcommittees dealing with each one of them, from food insecurity to housing and work. And so, and I think, I'll leave that to last. I'd also like to commend John, retired politician who is, and thank him for taking on the, being the leadership face of this task force. And also acknowledge the leadership of Keith Homer, the head of Community Services in Debrin, who not only, I think, inspires this committee, but also participated in the minister's task force on income insecurity. So I would recommend that, as we have heard tonight, that we all attend this meeting, January the seventeenth.
Food will be provided?
Yes, likely will be provided, thank you.
Yeah, Steve, go ahead.
So, I mean, just to sort of jump on the wagon, the information obviously is very important, the awareness is important. After the Dublin Blume, I was happy to see on the last page that there was some strategies as to how to reduce, but other than lobbying all levels of government, I was wondering, what are some of the practical solutions or strategies that you have in place or have thought of? And some of the things that come to mind, especially when we're dealing with food insecurity is more support for community gardens, for example. I think that would be helpful, so I'm not sure what the sort of view is on that. And I know a lot of restaurants, even grocery stores, throw a lot of food as well, so I was also wondering about partnering up with maybe some of the restaurants with respect to that, so at least there's a steady food, a steady flow of food. Does it resolve the issue? I'm totally aware of that, but at least it helps, so I was just wondering if you had any thoughts on that.
So the county does have a community garden down at the Elbrock Center. So, and again, it's all volunteer, right? So you have to depend on these volunteers to show up. So this was our first year of really getting it going and we got a small harvest from it, but it also brings people together, so, builds on that sense, a sense of community. As far as restaurants, like something like Second Harvest in Toronto and whatnot, yes. So, there was a, we used to get donations from local food stores, food stores. We still do get some, we get, we do get the baking and baking from Foodland. Our local grocery stores are very generous to us as far as giving donations and helping us, helping us out that way. I know there was a lot of red tape as far as getting certain foods donated. I know there's a ton of food thrown at restaurants, you know, every night. So we know that. I think there was a whole liability thing that's attached to that as far as accepting food. So as I said, we have a very generous community here. Right now, I mean, our Christmas hamburger program, that was around this past weekend, and we had a lot of local, a local farmers, producers donate potatoes, things like that. And again, the grocery stores, going around and picking up food that's not used. I know that we did do a lot more of it, but some grocery stores have stepped back because of liability. So, but we still, bacon, and it all goes, like nothing is wasted. And I'll tell you, if the food bank clients don't take it, I have Ontario early years families who take it. And if the early years families don't take that bread, there's staff at, staff at work at Debrin Mountsmobile, it's gone, nothing gets thrown out, so.
But with restaurant food that you were referring to, this becomes a health issue. You have to keep it refrigerated, you can't have it sitting out for any length of time and so on, so the health department plays a role in that. And there's very strict rules and regulations as to how you keep, store, and handle food, especially if it's cooked meals, it's difficult, so. Best thing, I think, is dry foods, canned foods. Those are the better ones because they have an expiry date, usually a year or sometimes more, and it can sit on the shelf for a week without any problems. When you get more into the perishable stuff, then you can only hang on to it so long. And at times, we have to give food away without addressing or assigning any points to it at the food bank because of expiry dates, just to get rid of it, make sure that they are used properly. But unless it's given to the food bank with a really outdated date, nothing goes towards it.
And if people ask me, you know, what can we give? I mean, honestly, I say money. It sounds, you know, it kind of, it can sound kind of cross, but we know exactly what the food bank needs. So that money goes to getting the deals that were offered at our local supermarkets. They offer us, they do, they do, they do work well with us, so they go and buy exactly what we need, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Any other questions for Connor, Shelley?
Well, thank you very much for having us and we'll hopefully see you next May or June and we'll try and drive this issue a little further.
In January.
Thank you.
Right?
Well, absolutely, we want to see all their faces on January, but we'll be back too.
All right. I have a motion, by the way, second by Dan Vierzow, council receives delegation from Mr. Oosterhoff as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion by Dan, second by Walter. Council receives items one to eleven under eight point oh consent agenda as presented and circulated, circulated excluding item number two. Is there anything else you'd like to talk separately? All in favor? Just carry it. The reason I want this number two separated is so that you guys can vote on that voting on the opposite.
Okay, so I have a motion group by myself, seconded by Steve. The council receives item eight point two under the consent agenda.
Comments?
Yeah, I actually just was going to mention very briefly, this was brought back at our last fireboard meeting, which was the two day ball in our last council meeting, so it was a very slight adjustment because the board had already approved our budget. The good news is it's to the positive side, so there was a slight correction which reduced the net impact to municipalities slightly. So I mean, it has no negative effect on the budget, it was for a pass new principle last meeting.
Walter, did you?
No.
I was going to tell my, so. All in favor? So looks like you got a few Christmas cards while I stand in the hall reading them. I got a next one from Mr. DeLuca, who is the Minister of Ministry of Transportation. Won't give you an advanced screen, but. Second one, you want a lot of Christmas?
Motion by Walter, second by Dan Vierzow. Council receives report for the contract development engineer dated December twelfth, twenty seventeen regarding private slash irregular sewer servicing as presented circulated. I further that council will only accept liabilities and maintenance for sanitary services located within the town owned right of way. Legal registered easements between the town and property owner and other, other town-owned properties. I'm going to stray a bit from the procedure by law because I have two. I'm going to stray a bit from the procedure by law because I have two gentlemen here that brought this to our attention. And I'll open the floor to the council first for any questions or discussion on the court. Corrections ready?
Just a general question. I mean, I think as councillors, we always think, what if we're in that position? Is that the right thing to do or not? And I guess I just have the question, I guess, to the staff or whatever. I mean, are the people that are in these residents, were they aware of that when they bought the residence? Or is something they reasonably should have known when they bought the residence? Or is this something that is a surprise to them? It would be a surprise to me if I find that my house is in the same situation.
Good question. I don't, uh, I don't know.
And that's why I just hate to blindly just pass all the, you know, all the responsibility back to that owner. In a reason, you know, if the town made a mistake 60 years ago and didn't follow the processes, to say this has to be that, the shelfy or right of way or whatever. I just wonder if there's no culpability on the side of the town, that's okay. But I just wonder, is there or is there not? Do we have some responsibility as a municipality to our residents that were caught in this situation through no follow of their own? Just a general question.
Carol?
So we tapped this question onto our legal. And legal confirms that it's the responsibility of the homeowner?
Legal's fine. I'm talking about moral responsibility, not legal responsibility.
And so in the past and even in the present, there are currently homes that are in this situation. And so they are, as these homes are being updated or developed into, into multi units, the cost is being borne by those who are doing it. So the question isn't just this particular property. The question then becomes we are the liability of going backward in time and refunding those who have put this money out in the past and those who are currently doing it now. Because there are developers now who are in the same situation who are financing this sort of thing, so.
Hey, my question was specific to this, one here tonight is just specific to we're passing a bylaw or whatever to make this policy. That was my question, not this particular issue. But I just want to make sure that the town should not be liable in some way for that. I respect that we've done this in the past, although it wasn't a policy that we had done this in the past, but new information remains.
Can I just say something? So what happens in this state age is that when there is private services going through private property, an easement is to be registered on title of subject property.
Yep.
Now, 60 years ago?
Exactly.
If we pull title on the property, there should be an easement registered. But that's another, we can pull title on many of those properties. 60 years ago, what the policies and legislation were clearly aren't what they are now. So there should be easements registered on title. Unless we pull all of those titles, we don't have the answer for your question.
Steve?
So let's say you undertake to do that, to find out whether that's reasonable or not. Because I agree with you, Andy, it's a concern. This ticker shock of finding out you're responsible for it, I don't know how fair that is. And so if there isn't an easement or there's no documentation that would show that you bought this with this sort of risk, is there some sort of financial relief that these homeowners could get as a result?
To my knowledge, not from the town. It, it's between what was registered on title. So if when purchasing that property, title was, a title search was done, that should be in the title. So you're signing a bill of sale or purchase, or a purchase. And that should be disclosed between the estate agent and lawyers amongst those property parties.
Sorry, wait.
Yeah, just sort of on a technical point there. Those sorts of things aren't always disclosed on a title search, unfortunately. If there was a registered easement, yeah, by all means, that would be picked up. We don't have one here, unfortunately. I'm struggling with this too. And I mean, I have no problem sort of with a generalized policy than, you know, in most cases. But I mean, I'm always reluctant to rely entirely on that slippery slope argument. If we do it for you and we have to do anything else. I mean, I personally think we're all grown up enough that we can look at the merits of each individual case and make a judgment call, you know, on those merits. So I mean, I'm reluctant to close the door on any particular situation that involves this. One thought that did just sort of come to mind as we were sitting here, that the homeowners might consider as title insurance. I don't know if that was purchased when you, when you bought it. That might be something that, you know, that a title insurer would cover because it's not typically something that would be discovered in a typical title search. I mean, that's questionable. But again, you know, to range point from a moral point of view, I mean, I struggle with just saying, you know, no, sorry, this is yours. Because really, you know, if they didn't do anything incorrect, they, you know, did their due diligence and this is something that wasn't picked up because it isn't recorded anywhere to be picked up. So I'm not sure that the homeowners should bear the brunt of that. On the other hand, is it the town's responsibility to pay for it? You know, it's, it's a tough call.
And Andy, I don't know the answer to it, but it may be a case by case basis, but maybe some shared financial responsibility or other options. I know in this case, I think options are taken in terms of, well, could we get it right of way? And I know you had to get it from another landowner, but, you know, if the people were willing to give it right of way to the town, you know, maybe it's not that easy, but I see that we just would assume that. I guess, just based on the way, you know, and I know from a legal and planning perspective, that's the right recommendation to make, but it's our job as councillors to do what we feel is right for the residents of the town shelter. And I'm just not sure yet that's the right thing to do. I, I'd like to explore it some more. I'm not sure whether there's more to explore, but I'm not real comfortable putting that on people.
Wait.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if somebody could refresh my memory. So there is a main sewer line on Owen Sound Street, but not right through the corner at Robert? Is that correct? Like, it doesn't come that far south, is that?
So there is a line on Owen Sound Street. It ends at Oakland Street.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure where it ends on, to the south.
Okay.
There's also a, uh, one at Fourth Avenue at the back lane.
Yeah.
Which is not explored at the time. And then there's, and then the other option was going up, uh, Robert Street. Yeah, Robert Street, and then back to the north on Owen Sound.
And that's the one I was sort of hoping to drill down on. So I mean, if we tapped onto the main line on William, came up Robert Street where there is that vacant, currently vacant land and made the loop around, I mean, that would sort of create a logical cycle which could potentially be used by, you know, other homeowners, developers, if that vacant land ever becomes developed, which, you know, would, I think, potentially be in our interest.
I believe that that vacant piece of property doesn't, already has access to it. Am I right of the path of loaning, the disloyal connections to the property? So they have to...
So let me, let me ask if, if that piece of property that we're talking about, split half, because that's with neighbors involved in it, would the western piece have access? I don't think so.
Not west, yeah. The guy in the east.
Only the east, otherwise we're recreating the same situation.
Uh, you're right from, um, there's a connection here. But that would still have to be brought up too.
And that's kind of, you know, the logical development, I think, that the land in the corner, the property needed split. And then you're up with that, you know, western building and being on service without having to access the property, the east to use it, which would be based on that.
Point to note, there is a developer interested in purchasing that vacant piece of property to come to it. They were asking ownership.
And this talks about the cost of hooking up a private water sewer connection. Says this cost shall be specifically charged on the lot for which it was, it was constructed. So what that means is that those who, so in this case, those properties that require this would, could have that charge. But no, it couldn't be shared, say, on a whole block. So it's very specific, it's very specific. Only those properties under that rate that can, that would be charged that charge. So the municipality would have to borrow money upfront and they have 10 years to repay under that charge. And because this is, this is considered a private, so...
It's not, that would be dead on school road.
No. See, no, that was, that was different. This is the actual rate that says that. So that would be far for, um, now, could there be some arrangement under development charges? That would, that would be a steep lever question. But there might be something where, where, you know, if there was a law and a hookup, that so much of it could be refunded. And that would be very similar to what happened on Victoria Street, where the developer paid upfront, did good work, and then as, as more houses came onboard, there was a, we actually, that developer of that particular area, a refund over time.
And we've never, sorry, just to continue on, we don't even know the cost currently, what it would cost to bring the house up that way.
So, so we had price, we were actually supplied price to buy the land piece. And so once staff, once staff realized from legal that this was considered, because these houses are going to be developed, because unless they're developed, unless these lots are severed and split, there is no other reason. If they were just going to renovate them or live in them or renovate and sell, there would be no need for this. So once we realized that this was not something, it was a development related charge, we didn't bother to expend the money because it would have required more time and money and advanced engineering than what our development engineer currently provides. And certainly we have our engineer here today, and he's, he's great. But as we all know, he comes with a cost. So we did not pursue anything else, any other, any other arrangements because, because at this point, it wasn't to be, just to expend that money when it was a development charge, we didn't go any farther with it. And that, that would actually be under our procurement policy because this project would eventually be more than 50,000. Like, we'd have to be getting, getting advanced RFPs done and completed to confirm all these prices.
Okay, thank you. So, anyway, I promised Greg an opportunity to speak or talk about this. And now is that opportunity, so.
So I guess I'll just, I'll answer a few questions that you guys had along with, which is, council mills confident on title insurance, which if I went in that direction, it's going to be back in the same spot where they're going to be sitting down, discussing the same thing with you guys as we're discussing. In relation to whether it's developed or not, whether it's developed and subdivided is no different than if I asked to put an addition on the property or upgrade or renovate the property, which needs to be done, needs to be done at that property. I can't use those sewers because any upgrades to that property, those sewers cannot be used. That's what's been told by the building department, is my understanding. I mean, the way I'm a little concerned because we're basically where we were back in September is we already had the answer from legal. My understanding at that time was they had already said it's not the responsibility of the town, which is why council had asked the town to figure out costs at that point. So the report basically, in my opinion, has what we already knew back in September. And then, so I mean, I have some, some costs from Avatarac that have been provided in emails. I don't know if you guys want copies of that, to see copies of that, if that, if that helps or if you want to just... I mean, I just don't see how we've advanced from September because the answers we already have. There's been further conversations with Kevin Bowler. My understanding is that approximately 25, 30 years ago, the town had filled in a sinkhole. I'm not sure how big that sinkhole was in the driveway. Since then, the town has come back again and filled it in. He's filled it in two more times and it's been filled in with concrete since then. Over the last, I'm not, I'm not sure when the last time he filled it in was. Now, he, he knows that sewer's there now, and now he's concerned that that sewer's actually leaking onto his property. So that's, I mean, that's another concern that we now have as well, is that we don't know if that sewer's leaking onto his property.
One of, the big thing is that we were sort of going in on the fact that maybe subdivided. I'm not getting any younger, I'm getting older, closer to the end. I may even put a single dwelling on there. It's a wide lot, so I can put a single dwelling home on there and sell myself a house on Silk Drive. Before the building inspector left last week, I've had lengthy discussions with Mike Drax. Mike said, and I know him personally, been in the industry for 10, 12 years building houses. Mike says, no matter how we cut the cake, you cannot do anything to either one of those homes to upgrade them, to build around them like some people get around. You get any permit and build around it, right? So we get away from having to go what we want. Mike says, I will not allow you to even do anything because those sewers are at the end of their life expectancy. They're done. Kevin Bowler's made it very clear that he will not agree to a easement. He told me tonight on the phone, a half an hour before we arrived, he's moved out and he's in the process of listing it or may have a private buyer. So it's moving forward, that lot, whatever they do with it, I don't know. But I would like to maybe build a single dwelling on there for myself, a bungalow, and it's got a good wide lot, they can do it. I can't do that. I'm sitting with a house, I'm not going to hide behind, I paid $300,000 to my lot, overpriced. I done all the research. I talked to Jennifer, I went to the land registry office. We done all of our due diligence. We done everything possible. We did not know until truth toward my enclose that my sewers was cutting into Greg's and his was going to Kevin's. We've done everything that we could possibly do as owners. Like, all of them here today is, please tell me what we should have done differently and how are we responsible for a decision that was made in 1967 by Bill Irwin or Alan McKelvey? Like, we shouldn't be held responsible for a judgment that was made back in the day that we had no control over, nor did we know when we purchased it. You know, and add a little bit of humor to it, Greg will probably have it, but anyway. 1960, between 60 and 1980, Pierre Trudeau fired people that were civil servants. They hired, fired arsonists because of their GBLT. His son realized it was wrong and he corrected the wrong of the government of the day. They put up $200 million. I know that's not even come close to what we have here, but it's the same thing. Doesn't somebody have to be responsible for a decision made by previous government? They allow, the town got money to hook those up. The homeowner's been paying sewer bills for 50 years going through somebody else's property. We're paying for water bills going through somebody else's property. We're even paying taxes based on that we have a proper sewer connection, a water connection, and we don't. We don't have the property. We shouldn't have been paying the cost where for taxes over those years because it wasn't properly done. I can't, I can probably dig into it, but somebody, you know, Jimmy Demmings or somebody hooked that sewer system up. I've lived here for 60 years. Somebody done it and the town knew it was done, but nobody registered it. And with respect to your report, it talks about 26 other homes. My question is, why weren't those homes documented? I know there's another home with sewers running through the property of town. I've exhausted all those avenues. I've been land registry office, spent hours there. I know another property in town where 10 feet were taken off a lot to run sewers and water through the properties. So somebody did do it right. But if it went to the report, why can't they give me the addresses for the benefit of the town? You're paying a report for a report, why wasn't that documented? And give us the opportunity to explore it because we got time, we got the experience to see if those facts are exactly the same as ours. Because we did not know there was no sewers on Owen Sound Street, you know, or water for that fact. I mean, we got a lot of money tied up in here and we done our job. I mean, we got a lot of money tied up in here, and we done our job. But somebody didn't register it at the land registry, and somebody didn't register the town. And all of them asking is that get some cooperation from the town, and if I overlook something, please tell me what you would have done differently, and how you would deal with it if you're in the same position. That's all I ask. How you'd like to be treated by council, and what you've done and done differently, you know, spend three hundred thousand dollars on a lot that nobody's going to let you build on. That's a lot of money, that's life savings. We just talked about, you know, people with hardships and stuff, I mean, that's a lot of money, we just dumped down the drain. In three years, those houses get condemned, and we got to tear them down. The lots are sitting there, now we're looking at over eighty to a hundred thousand dollars to put water and sewers in, that we're being charged for, that isn't properly installed. So, I just beg for you guys to offer a solution, because we don't, I don't think we done, we done everything possible as developers.
Done differently? I really don't know. I had the, I had Avatar Tech at my house on Main Street. I thought of a great idea that I could sever that, that corner lot. I had Avatar Tech come over, they did a couple measurements, it went back to a few days, said if I want sewers, give you seventy-five thousand dollars for Main and James. I said, thank you very much, case closed, move on. Right, I don't know, I don't, I don't know. You do the same thing, it's, but yours is more money than a hundred twenty thousand, I think is the number you guys are using.
Well, well, it's not, it's actually not that much anymore going from fourth Avenue, but I mean, one of the question, question I have is, how did, how did those houses get determined that they don't have proper sewers? Because when I was speaking with Jack, Jack Toppling couldn't confirm whether these houses had proper sewers or not. So, like, how did, how were these twenty-four locations or twenty-six determine that they didn't have proper sewers, when they couldn't determine if ours necessarily had proper sewers or not?
Okay, I see some writing going on, I'll get back to that. Okay. So, researching the old servicing maps is what Maury needs to spend her time.
Okay. And, and when, when the lawyer was consulted, would the lawyer have been aware that the town would have approved the sewers going through these lots at the time? Because if they were just told they're, they're private sewers and private properties?
Right.
That's a different situation than sixty years ago, the town approved these sewers to go through private properties, but now they're going through the private properties, and there's no easements. But if the lawyer wasn't told that the town approved that, they're going to have a different view than if the town did approve it, if that makes sense.
Understand that, yes, but we don't know if they're approved or not. This could have just been some guys hooking stuff up sixty years ago, when, you know, in-home servicing was a thing of the day. You know, today, obviously, those things would be recorded and town approved and that kind of thing, where I think, you know, we don't even know, or I don't know what year we're talking.
Sixty-seven.
Whether they're installed, but it may have been people excited just to have in-home plumbing on the property. So, I don't know if we can say the town's approved it, because we can't, we can't prove it from our side either. We know it's existing, which just keeps, we keep going around this same circle. So, I don't have, I mean, that's what we're here discussing, is to find, to find a resolution. My, my, my concern with this, and I understand, believe me, that you, you bought this property, you want to develop it, because the homes are, need some improvement, we'll say. My, my struggle is that there's an application to sever that or build semis, and that's not for the benefit of, of us, right? That's for the benefit of, of you guys. And that's where I, that's where I'm struggling.
Only one has an application, I haven't put an application.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
And I'll give the benefit of, yeah, that application is there, but when it comes down to it, like I said at the last meeting, I don't care whether it's a semi or a single, that house has to come down, whether it's a semi that goes up, or whether it's a single family dwelling that goes up. To me, it really doesn't matter. Yes, one's more of a benefit to the other, however, a semi is a benefit to the town as well, because you're going to have more development fees and more taxes, more water bills. I mean, that's another way of recouping costs that, that potentially can be there.
So, I understand, but there's not a lot of profit on, on, or things like that. And that's, that's kind of where I'm at, and that's where my struggle is.
Just a question, if I don't...
Sure.
...make an answer here. So, if, if that sewer line that runs up through that property has damage to it, is leaking, we're saying that bylaw there, that's left to, that's not our responsibility, because that stretches the homeowner's responsibility, just what we're saying at that point, right? Just so I understand.
So, so, yes, this, this report is saying that at the street, the connection is made, that's where the town responsibility begins and ends. As far as the pipe, good question. This is from Jack Toppling, and he doesn't work with us anymore, but it says, pipe is in surprisingly good shape for its age, there are a few joints that are marginal, but none separate. It looks like it's as best as cement pipe, which is typical in those older, older constructions.
I guess two comments. What is, in that scenario, so all of a sudden, the pipe breaks or whatever, and it's no longer usable, it's on a neighbor's property, the neighbor doesn't give the homeowner the right to go onto his property to fix it, then what happens?
Even better question.
Well, we passed a policy a couple years ago, that's a right of...
Okay, that's to do with...
Right of access, that's right, right of access. And so, what they do is they apply to the town, give notice to that owner of the property.
And so, we, we can, we have the legislative ability to go and allow people to go on that property?
Under the municipal act, we, the town has the right to go on private property to assist with fixing. I forgot what section it was, but the lawyer didn't mention it.
We can't, in the same vein, create easements for our own benefit. Obviously not. Okay, so my, my second point is, I mean, the motion on the floor isn't specific to the letgo problem. Motion on the floor just deals with setting a policy, a strict policy on this type of situation, where sewers run through other properties, from what I believe. So, now that we've had grassed, important discussion is what brought it up, but the motion is really to approve or not approve the report, I think, from our, whatever the title is.
Development.
Development here. So, just my two cents is, I, I'm going to vote against that motion, because I think it's too strict, I kind of like Wade's idea. I think we need to take this on a case-by-case basis. Does it specifically, at this point in time, help the particular problem that we have? But I don't think I'm at the point where I want to pass a, a report, pass a report that's going to unilaterally allow us to have a position that the homeowner has to pay for everything every time this situation, so. Just trying to get back to where we started on this discussion, that's what the motion is about, was about the general policy.
The page two of the report speaks to their property, properties in specifically.
Oh, do they? Okay.
Yeah, five oh one, five oh three Owen Sound Street.
Okay. My apologies.
I think it's, it's all encompassing, it talks about it, the other twenty, where are we here, twenty-six, twenty-four identified lots are talked about on page one, but on page two, it speaks specifically about five oh one, five oh three Owen Sound Street.
Oh, this is where we're missing the page, okay.
Yeah.
That's my problem.
For all honesty.
I didn't hear there was a page missing, sorry.
It's in the new one.
Yes.
And so...
Got me.
And so, it, the report speaks...
Yep.
...that it is understood these properties were purchased with the intent of demolition in existing homes to rebuild, semi-detached, and increase density housing for resale. That's mentioned specifically in the report. And I guess, counsel, if you want, if you want to receive this report, and in further to talk about accepting liabilities and maintenance, I wish I could be again.
Well, just wondering, we have our town engineer here, I wonder if he had some insight, perhaps you might even refer to other municipalities.
Yeah, I, I may be the unpopular person in the room to talk. To be fair, one of the triggers is the development of the properties. If the existing home was staying there, while I appreciate the situation of needing to renovate or bad, it would not trigger this, is the fact that they're being polished and replaced, excuse me, replaced with, that piece. You're opening a huge can of worms from the development community, if you do accept this and move forward, because every single development pays for its own services, for its own piece. You ask for a legal opinion and an engineering opinion, and you now have that in front of you, both say those problems lie, and nothing on the other, private is the developer's responsibility. And as you said, that's an unpopular discussion here in this room, and I appreciate why, because it's a moral discussion. There's no records that indicate it was approved by the town, we've been involved in several municipalities where it's done at three AM in the morning, or it's done on Saturday morning, where somebody agrees to it, then all municipalities end up taking this stance. It's the legal appropriate stance, and it's the one that gets pushed forward. So, from an engineering perspective, from a planning perspective, and from a legal perspective, you are being told it ends up properly. What council decides is obviously council's decision, but that's really what the reports will say, and that's what it'll say for the next one that comes forward, and the one after that, and the one after that. So, those opinions will not change. It's what council decides to do as a, as a group in this situation.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Wait.
I don't want to get too far into the weeds on this either, but I mean, the fact that twenty-four, twenty-six other properties have been identified, this has had similar situations, I mean, that, that itself concerns me a bit. You know, and the fact that we're leaving sort of all the responsibilities, the sewer's up to the property owners to, you know, properly maintain and what else, you know, that causes concerns, one, from health and safety issue, two, you know, the impact that it has on the rest of the infrastructure that we own, because it's all connected to it. You know, if that property owner can't afford or doesn't have the inclination to keep it properly maintained, you know, what effect does that have on our, you know, our grid, for lack of a better term? So, I mean, I don't know, Steve, like, should there be some sort of, you know, strategy in place to try to bring these identified properties online in, in some way, so that, you know, they are, you know, properly consumed under town ownership with easements and everything else?
Well, I think what, what was pointed out, and again, not to identify those properties, but they've really been identified no different than this one, and I don't exactly know where those services are, but there's not mainline sewer running in front of those properties. So, that alludes to the fact that there could be the possibility of them running down easements, running down other pieces, so that's where the time comes from. We're referring to this as a sewer, but ultimately, it is a service, so it's no different than the service that runs from your house out to the property line, other than appreciating the fact that it does, and other property where we would typically, under today's say and age mandate, an easement. And we've been involved in this in several municipalities, and as we said, it did happen in the past. There's no way to determine whether it was or was not approved, it's no different than the seatbelts in your nineteen seventies car, it doesn't meet today's standards. So, we're being asked to figure out, does it meet that, does it meet that guideline? And it does not. So, at this point, it's the upgrade piece, as was said by Jack, that the pipe itself is in reasonably good shape for the age of it. If it wasn't the development of this property, it wouldn't be triggered. That's where Mike Giles is saying, you know, you add a washroom, you add more flow, you add something different, it triggers the piece. So, like you said, this, this is not, children's not the only one facing this. There's one in Orange Village I know of right today that I can tell you exactly where the property is, well, probably can't, but, and they're in the exact same book, and it's, and it's a situation where I wasn't the one involved, I was actually on the other side, trying to help that homeowner get, get that extension, and it will, you know, the homeowner's cost to feel good, so, you have to listen to the public all the time.
Okay. So, if we have, I'm sure, maybe not in, in the core of town, but we must have towns, or homes in town that have septic tanks, which is still currently. And so, if they want to hook onto the sewer, that would be their expenses, yes, from, through the yard or whatever, to the nearest...
And it could be that it fails and, and eats them to do it, no different than the sewer failing, or it could be they just choose to have a better, more reliable system, right?
I'm sorry, I stepped in your, mayor. I agree with what you're saying, there's no issue about paying for what's on your property. That's not what we're talking about here. If somebody's got a septic system in place, like, keep in mind, I've been here sixty years, I sit down this afternoon and went through every street in Chauvin, and I can pretty much sit down with you and guess what houses that the engineer's report has been identified. I can pretty well do it, and I think Walter did, he got six months on me, Walter, so we're pretty well building down. I know what we're talking about, and I still don't agree or believe they're the same situation we're faced with. They may, they may be going through easements or not properties, but physically going through another property and two tied together, I don't believe it. I think some of them may be going through backyards where there aren't proper easements, but cutting through another individual's property, and just to make, so you're aware of it, like I said, Kevin spoke to him this, tonight, his is going up for sale, and I can tell you, we're through that property, it's going to be flattened, and when they dig it up, we're going to lose our sewers. I can tell you that right now. I mean, you, we can't tell the guy that buys that property, he has to fix our sewers for him. And with respect to Council Chambers' comment about fixing it, I realize the town would fix something on town property, but I don't think, counselor, that they would come onto Kevin Bowler's property and fix something where it broke, because again, it becomes our problem, and Kevin doesn't want to, you know, technical terms, Kevin doesn't want us on his property. So, there's a huge, I'm not disagreeing with your engineer, he's got a job to do, not more, not necessarily a moral thing, he's got administrative and maybe a financial responsibility to the town. But I, I'm sorry, as a resident here for sixty years, I question this twenty-four in the same situation as ours. Because I went through the town, and I know, I watched the development here from fifteen hundred people, so I know it was done properly, you know, after nineteen, you know, around nineteen seventy-five moving forward.
Okay. Wait.
Just a question for Steve, and we brought up in that point, hypothetical here, but, but, you know, if somebody bought that neighboring property, demolished it, you know, cut the service line that servicing letgoes property, at that point, you know, he basically does without service until he foots the bill to reroute something to his own property from one of our existing lines. That's, that's kind of a, you know, if, if we take the approach that's recommended. Because I mean, that, that's a realistic possibility, I guess.
And, counselor, my concern is if we dole out that close to a hundred thousand dollars, what's stopping anybody at five oh seven or five eleven deciding to tap into ours? We take it that far, it's going to be really minimal cost for them, all those houses tap into the front on Owen Sound Street, once we bring it up Robert, or across, or across Owen Sound Street?
But that's where development charges could actually pay you back for it, and that happens on all developments, where you front ended, and then you get paid the appropriate with legal documentation to get back for that.
But we deal with a whole bunch of what ifs, if somebody develops it, if they tie in. I could be dead and gone before five oh seven, and five eleven decided to tie you to the front, you know? That's the problem.
Is it possible to expropriate an easement?
Our legal counsel advised to not expropriate our private property if it's through there and it's not on town.
Sorry, Jennifer, you're a little low, hard of hearing.
So, the legal counsel had advised that we not register a town easement on private property.
Didn't say on, when you expropriate, isn't it now appropriate?
We want it to be town property, but expropriation is not in this process.
Just trying to think of different ways.
Sorry, Jeff?
And just, and just to be clear, you had mentioned that the cost had gone down, had been reduced somehow, what, what exactly are we talking about now?
So, the cost to go from Fourth Avenue at the back lane, and then to Owen Sound Street, was going to be eighty thousand dollars, and then it was going to be twenty-five thousand dollars for, to put the two connections to the property, and that was if the sewer went down the middle of the road. He said that the sewer line can be put onto the boulevard, and it would significantly decrease that cost, but he didn't know what that cost was going to be. He needed further discussions with town planners, town engineers, to determine what that cost would be, if they would even approve that.
So, could you just, you're a group, you just want to be a group? So could you just, you agree, you just want to be a group again?
Yeah, so the back lane at Fourth Avenue and then go east to Owen Sound Street and he would basically, they bore that underground and they could either put a manhole in the middle of the road there or they could put the manhole on the Boulevard, but that would need some approvals from the town.
And that cost was?
So that cost was, if it was going to be in the middle of the road, was approximately $80,000 and then it was going to be $25,000 on top of that to put the two runs, one into 501 and one into 503 and then if it went on the Boulevard, it would be cheaper.
Yeah, so you're all aware, the sewer line actually stops for, for the benefit of those who probably know, it's where Linda Buffett's hole, where she severed that property off on the back lane there. So that's where the sewer stops and I understand, I've spoken to Linda, there were submissions when, when she connected the sewers, but the manhole stops right there. So if you're coming up the back lane between the high schools and for a point of reference, former mayor Ed Cruzins, so you come up that back lane and then Fourth Avenue comes this way. So right at that corner is where the last manhole, sewer manhole is at that, at that spot.
At the lane?
Yeah, right. Lane and fourth intersect.
I don't think it's actually on that map.
No.
It's just cut off.
So that's where we're looking at, that intersects the back lane with fourth, we'd have to go down there, board across, hit the Boulevard in front of 501 and 503. If we went that route and we get permission from the town to install in your, on your property, but in the Boulevard area opposed to digging up the highway, which would be more beneficial.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Solutions?
So I can hear any solutions, any numbers talked around, like what, what are you asking? What's your ask?
Well, if, if the town would run their portion of, of the sewer to the property, I mean, and then we were to share from the sewer, or provide from the sewer line to into the property, that would be reasonable. Because we're asking what most other residents have in town, which is a main sewer line in front of their house and then we would provide to tie into that property, into that line.
We're seeing that running to the Boulevard would be significantly less, all right?
He's saying that to the Boulevard would be less because he doesn't have to dig up the road. I don't know what significantly less meant, but that was just what was in the email.
This is Avid Tech.
Sorry?
Who's the same guy?
Well, no, that's who Jack referred us to, that's why we went to him, so we all get on the same page. Unfortunately, Jack left in midstream, which is causing the...
Walter is more.
Walter is.
Would you like it back?
Yeah. Can you change my Walter?
Sorry, yeah, yeah.
She said tip to, like, Tanya in front of Sam's, 25 grand per property?
No.
Did you write that?
Eight grand.
Yeah, to get it to the front. I get that eight grand to run to Fourth Avenue and to Owen Sound and then was mentioning 25 grand.
For two, for the two laterals.
Connection.
For the two laterals from the, from the main into each property.
Okay.
Yeah.
So for the semis, just hypothetically.
It'd be 20, yes, hypothetically, yes.
So it's all five roughly per lateral?
Right. And hypothetically, I wouldn't even as much agree if the semis were not going to approve.
So that's 25 there?
Twenty-five for.
Plus 25?
Twenty-five for each property? No, sorry, 12 five for each property? Yes. Yeah. And then if there, if there was hypothetically, Mr. Mills said to be semis, then it would be 25 for each property, is my safe, does that make sense?
Twelve thousand five hundred.
For each run.
Yeah. So each lateral line that has to be on.
And is the size of the, you know?
We do have that, you guys can solve it too. Yeah.
You can recharge it. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We can discuss that table here.
Well, I heard all the discussions.
Okay. Ready that motion, do you want to move on?
I would. First, before you hear any with it or?
Well, Dan and I were discussing since he's a secondaire, I don't want to, you know, and his suggestion is 50% of the cost be borne by the town and 50% of the cost be borne by the people that require it. And I'm not sure how the council feels on that.
So you're ready in the motion and vote on that?
It's going to be difficult because we don't know what that number's going to be.
Do you want to upset numbers?
Do you want to upset numbers?
Unless you're going to cap it, right.
Yeah, cap it at what?
Of what though? Because we don't know what the number's going to, that's the difficulty of it.
If the vote has been 80,000, that's where we're going to cap it at, 80,000, 30% of 80,000.
You mean tapping it at 80?
Just one other comment, the only thing is that I'm not sure which council talked about it, but what happens if the old hospital nursing home gets subdivided and they tap into that, how does that cost sharing come up? And what if 511 has the same problem and decides to tap into Owen Sound Street? Like where does this ripple effect stop? If we pay half of it and then there's a kickback towards, let's say that the old Austin's nursing home decided to divide and then the people on the west side want to tie into that line, I mean, we, you or we shouldn't have to, they should have to pay the same as what we're paying as if 511, which is the pal place, decided they need to tie into the front as well. That's the problem that we're faced with future construction. And the only thing, just one last comment, this is not development. I'm putting a home back on a home and I know how we treat it as development, when I just want to replace the house that's there.
I just want to know that 511 is serviced from William Street, it's not subdivided and split.
Sorry?
511 is serviced from William Street.
507, the one where?
507.
Seven, I apologize, seven.
That's right.
Wait. Just a comment in terms of processing to move things along here. And I mean, it's Walter's motion, you do it as you want. Personally, I'm not sure that we should start mixing any sort of negotiated arrangement with the length easing with this motion. I think it speaks to one issue. My preference would be let's vote on this. I think as it's drafted, I'm going to oppose it because I, you know, generally speaking, while I don't disagree with the recommendation that, you know, sewers that are on private, you know, land really aren't our liability anyway, so I don't think we have to make a resolution of that, that effect. How we decide to deal with each and everyone, if there's a request is up to us. So I think any request should be dealt with in a separate motion and maybe we defer it to the next meeting, you guys come back with an actual harder number for us and then we can discuss how much, if any of that, we're willing to share.
So has a secondary agreement decided to table this meeting? Item clerk, is that the acceptable length?
If there's a secondary agreement, they can give a lot.
There's no vote on it, it's just, fair enough. Okay. Gentlemen, is that sure that you come back next week with a vote on, or next meeting?
The only comment I have on that is they're not as forthcoming with the cost to us as they are to the town because it's going to be work for the town as opposed to us. So they're not necessarily giving us the quotes.
More detailed invoice from Avid Tech. Steve Collinburg is well aware where we're looking at, but I think you guys got to tell them, we want a cost from that back lane up, we're prepared to allow you to use the Boulevard area and break it down into sections, right?
Fair enough. I will call Steve first.
And there, the only other thing with respect to my property and you know, we brought this up as well, the water service to my property again goes through somebody, we think through somebody else's property. Rob Matthews still hasn't found out where it's coming from, but it's coming through somebody's property at the back, we have the same problem with water.
We'll get, both at the same time?
Yeah, you might as well.
Okay. Fair enough. All right. When is the first meeting in the new year?
It's January 8th. However, given the scheduling, I'm not sure we can obtain information on that, I think the most things are closed from next week. What about the first meeting in February? That gives us a good four weeks to contact Avid Tech or whoever else to get our new development engineer involved.
So I will, I will contact Avid Tech myself with the goal of January 8th meeting, but understanding with holidays and such, it may go to the next one.
Yeah.
I'll communicate that with you.
Okay, thank you.
What we can expect to, to talk about that again.
Thank you.
All right. Most of you did, enough to vote on, so good discussion and thanks for coming. I understand the frustration.
Thank you for your time, I mean, I realize, just to clarify, so that one motion or that report that's submitted is accepted for as information only at this time?
Hasn't been, hasn't been, hasn't been voted on.
So it's going to be tabled then?
It's tabled.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, gentlemen. Merry Christmas to you guys.
Merry Christmas.
Next item is a report from Steve Burnett regarding arsenic levels. So, that's why I can't find it. Mr. Jurgen, Steve, why don't you start? I can't seem to find my place, so.
That's okay, I can maybe give a quick update for council if that's okay, what the purpose of the report was and then open it up for questions afterwards. So the reason we brought the report forward is a bit of an update as to where things are at with respect to the natural occurring arsenic levels within the, within the town's well supply. As I believe council is well aware, but I'll maybe reiterate that the material standard for arsenic has been proposed to be reduced from 25 micrograms per liter down to 10 micrograms per liter. That regulation comes into effect January 1st, 2018 and it is a regulation change based on Health Canada's updated guideline based on a lifetime exposure to arsenic. As most previous council members are aware, the town has spent considerable cost and effort associated with making sure the town is prepared for this, for this change, most specifically the work that has happened out at developing well seven and eight as well as blending and mixing with well five. At our July report, we did report to council that well three's original concept of trying to blend, similar to what happened out at five six, was determined as not, not a viable solution to be able to deal with well three. So at that time, council did direct both ourselves, Aqua and town staff to move forward with what we're kind of calling a, a two-pronged approach, one being the class EA, NEA class EA for being able to run well seven and eight together as well as look at treatment options for the well three supply. So with respect to the class EA, that work has commenced as, as was anticipated, we have met with the ministry on several occasions about what has been going on and we are now in a position to do the testing of well seven and eight back to back, which will most likely occur in the January timeframe at this point. We originally hoped for December, but knew it would push beyond the January deadline, but we are pretty much on track now. The permits to take water for that temporary testing has been put in and the ministry has been working quite diligently with the bill banks and hydrogeologists back and forth on that work. One thing that did have to happen is we do have to lower the pump set seven and eight just to deal with the anticipated drawdown of running both together and that work was actually completed by the contractor last week, so they are sitting in good shape for that work. With respect to the testing or pilot testing that was agreed to for well three to see whether there can be treatment technology available and to be honest with you, that is part of the reason why Health Canada did lower the arsenic guidelines is that newer technology has come forward, research has been put into it in the last couple of years that does have better and better technology out there and that's part of the reason Health Canada was able to push to try and lower that limit to a, to a lower established barrier. At this point, we have reached out to the Walkerton Clean Water Center and for anyone that does not know, the center was established after the tragedy at Walkerton with the focus of providing training for operators, providing training for other groups, expertise and one of the things that they actually have been able to also provide is pilot testing and studying at an independent level. So we've had through our firms some great success in utilizing that service and did reach out to that group and they did come a couple of weeks ago, I guess it is now, toured the facilities and are looking at the technologies that Aqua had received some quotations on as well as some other technologies that may work. They're currently in line to do that pilot testing in late January, early February. We will have to ship, I think it's close to 60,000 liters that we'll end up shipping up there in order for them to run through, I think it's three or four different technologies and we'll be able to then make sure that the one that we are looking at for a potential long-term solution is a viable option. All of this, I guess, leads us to sort of the main purpose of why we brought forward the report in the fact that there's been significant effort put forward by the town to, I guess, get two of the three supplies that had natural occurring arsenic in them under the new regulation. There is one supply left that will be slightly over that new regulation, so we have been meeting with the Ministry of the Environment as well as the local health unit and they are very on board with the work that the town has been doing, understanding that the timelines just will allow that last well supply to be able to fall under the newly proposed limits and in doing so, they have asked that the town put out a public notification for making folks that are in this area aware of the fact that we won't quite be making that limit for the time period, I guess, early first few quarters of, of 2018 possibly depending on which solution into, into the construction season of 2018. They actually also realized in their involvement back and forth with us that they also had a bit of a reporting criteria possibly needed for private wells in the area, so they're taking this opportunity to maybe notify residents. there in order for them to run through, I think it's three or four different technologies, and we'll be able to then make sure that the one that we are looking at for a potential long-term solution is a viable option. All of this, I guess, leads us to sort of the main purpose of why we brought forward the report, in the fact that there's been significant effort put forward by the town to, I guess, get two of the three supplies that had natural occurring arsenic in them under the new regulation. There is one supply left that will be slightly over that new regulation, so we have been meeting with the Ministry of the Environment as well as the local health unit, and they are very on board with the work that the town has been doing, understanding that the timelines just will allow that last well supply to be able to fall under the newly proposed limits, and in doing so, they have asked that the town put out a public notification for making folks that are in this area aware of the fact that we won't quite be making that limit for the time period, I guess, early first few quarters of, of 2018, possibly depending on which solution into, into the construction season of 2018. They actually also realized in their involvement back and forth with us that they also had a bit of a reporting criteria possibly needed for private wells in the area, so they're taking this opportunity to maybe notify residents outside of the town boundaries or near the town boundaries that are in private wells, because obviously if they're drawing from that same aquifer, they could potentially be dealing with limits that are over the new regulation as well. So, both the health unit and the Ministry of the Environment, while acknowledging that the limit is a new limit and that the town must move to putting in place the proper protocols and capital works to make that limit, have acknowledged that it is a lifetime exposure limit, and so it's really at this point, a notification protocol that they're asking for and being in the loop as we move forward with the implementation of our two-pronged approach. So, we have attached a draft message that was proposed probably two-thirds or even 70% by the health unit, and then we added just some local knowledge and some local pieces to it. So I guess this evening, we're just trying to make sure that council is aware of what the notice reads and how it reads at this point, and if council is on board and acceptable for that public notification, then we would work with staff to ensure that we meet those requirements as per the ministry and the health unit's requirements, and we will obviously still continue to push forward on the two possible solutions and then report back to council on some more positive news as well.
Okay, thanks, Steve. So, I don't have any questions in your report. Pretty clear. My concern is over the town's communication, and I was going to be my question for you, the author, it sounds like you've had some help. Because this is very fact-based, I didn't read a lot of "it's okay, don't worry" in this letter.
Okay.
And my concern is we're going to have people running to boil their water, and it's not necessary, but I don't read that in here, and I was maybe looking for some help on that, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, and to be fair, Your Worship, it was part of the concerns that we had in meetings, is that it really is a lifetime exposure, to be honest with you. The health unit was very clear that the, if it wasn't for treatment technologies, it actually should be even lower point, I think it was, instead of 10, it was supposed to be 0.03 or something like that, because the way Health Canada works is it's supposed to be lifetime exposure and one person in a million is how water regulations are set. This new regulation would still be 40 individuals, if I remember correctly from our meeting. So, you are correct that we felt the same way. It was definitely the health unit pushing out the majority of the fact-based fees to it, and we are open to modify and to push back a little bit as far as the right wording, but to be fair, yeah, they were the authors for a large portion of that.
Fair enough. Any other questions, Randy?
Just, I mean, that makes a lot of sense to me, just putting in the letter somewhere. This is not a requirement that you boil water, that's what everybody runs to, right?
Yeah, I mean, we've been discussing arsenic in our water understanding for a long time. Yes. I just think, you know, people reading it may have read the last reports, and then tomorrow we're going to send them this, and holy smokes, what's going on? And causing alarm that really doesn't need to be there.
Yep.
And even my suggestion is just additional paragraph at the bottom that says something like, "there is no cause for alarm, this is regulation change only," and then some sugar and spice in there as well, but I'm just concerned that our Christmas season may be filled with phone calls and emails about...
Sorry, Your Worship, my concern is that they're going to end up going to the hospital and they've got arsenic poisoning all of a sudden, or something of that nature there. Calling up their doctor, you know, "I've been drinking this water for the last 65 years, all of a sudden, am I going to die of arsenic poisoning?"
Right. Yeah, no, it's, as was said, this is a regulatory change, so...
A one in forty, you'd say, over a lifetime. And if I've lived in this town a lifetime, and I'm the one in forty who's going to be with arsenic poisoning because I've been drinking the water.
You're probably going to die in the next 20 years, probably, because of the water.
Maybe sooner, I don't know. I've been drinking it for 60 something odd years or so.
And me too.
The other, the other little piece I would like in here is that town council expects the resolution by whatever date you're comfortable putting in there, mid to 2018 or January 2nd, 2018, or whatever, whatever date you're comfortable working with.
That's what I, because we all know well three is probably the smallest well, but we have one of the smaller wells, so, so what, what percentage of the water that we distribute comes out of well three, Steve, like 20%, 15%?
On a maximum day scenario, it's about 25%. So on your hottest day of the summer, it would make up 25%.
Right. But an average over, do you know on average?
Probably about half of that. So, so because it's hard for us to go through those calculations, but everything's based on max day, because we want to be able to provide water on max day.
I'm just trying to, again, put out the whole story that, and really, only 15% of your water comes from well three, so 85% of your water meets all the requirements. I'm not sure if that adds any...
Yeah.
It's not like well three is 90% of our water, it's 15% of our water. Now, that makes it good or bad, but that's, that's a fact, right?
It's something that may be helpful to council is, is if you have residents contact you and they have concerns in this regard, the health units number to supply here and to direct them there, they, if you listen to the health unit talk, it will put their minds to rest.
I know nobody around here is concerned about it, but the resident reading it?
Yes.
Yeah, and the health unit was very proactive, I think, in calming the situation and making sure that, yes, it is a regulatory change, at the same time, they wanted to make sure the facts were accurate, and that's definitely how the notification came across. So, we can definitely do a friendly amendment to their document and with some of the points that have been brought forward. They did ask, and they did give it to the town as the town's notification, so they just had offered to give some of the verbiage, but did ask that they be copied before it go back in public, just so that they ran the loop. As you'll see, there's no town number on here, even though obviously everyone will still call. It was their intent to really downplay any of that potential hysteria.
Ready?
Only a quick comment, I read it once, but I should read it again. But just, I mean, you say arsenic, people say, "oh, what treatment plan?" We all know it's a natural occurring substance that impacts six municipalities in Ontario, whatever. Just happens to be the rock that's under Shelburne, it's just our bad luck that, I mean, if there's any way of mentioning that, I mean, it's nothing that's ever happened or happened in the talent in the past that's caused this. Natural occurring just happens to be the type of rock that lies under Shelburne. Whether you want to get into that, much as you go, I'm not sure, but...
More information is better as far as that. If they've read it this far and are prepared to boil the water, I'd like something in there that would calm that down a little.
So, I agree with the mayor on having that additional language in there. I was a little more concerned about the timeline as to when it would be in compliance. I appreciate the sort of lifetime exposure and the rock underneath as an explanation, but I think for most residents reading this, they're not going to care too much about that. And like Walter said, I think they're probably going to be running to the local doctors, and quite frankly, I could see the sort of level of concern, because all you have to do is think about what happened with the water in Detroit, and that's where a lot of people's minds are going to be going to, right? And I'm sure that they try to convince their residents that, "hey, listen, the water is fine, don't worry about it," but then we all know what the health implications were because of the exposure, so I think that's what you're going to be dealing with. It may not necessarily be physical, but it's the mental that you're dealing with here. So, I think the language to sort of tone it down and providing some sort of concrete time, if that's possible, as to when it would be brought back into compliance will help address some of the concerns that are obviously there.
Yeah, and as we alluded to in our report, we've referred to a 2018 construction season. Part of that is the EA process really has, it's very difficult to put timelines on it because you're following through Ministry of Ontario reviews through that process. It's the quick fix, but has timelines associated with it that might take longer because of regular, of reviews and agency involvement. The other approach, which is the potential treatment, after we have the piloting, we will have the answer to whether it does work or not for the town supply. We do have a current supplier that has actually already put forward a performance guarantee in their sales page to try and move forward with it. It then becomes another capital expenditure that has to come to those tables. So, it is physically feasible for it to happen in the 2018 construction season. It really is something that was not previously on any radar because of the way the work was done, the planning work was done by the previous group, so. So I guess I'm comfortable saying 2018, but it's not under my control. It's, it's actually out of our control from that perspective. We can meet that timeline. It actually will come back to the ministry for approval as well as the stable, to be fair, for a potential capital expenditure that's not on the list, so.
And, you know, that could be problematic, because if they don't meet it, then somebody's going to get an error from it. So, I'd rather maybe you not put a timeline if you're not comfortable that it could be met and there could be extensions well beyond the timeframe that you're putting in there, because I think that would do more damage than any benefit, in my opinion.
I think we thought well seven would take one year, took maybe three years.
So there you go. Yeah, so...
And well seven was our answer initially, right? So, that's a lot we've been working with, more than that.
I think just being transparent, saying, "we're not sure, but we're trying to move," is probably the best approach.
Dan?
So, I, I agree with what's being said. I think, I think as long as we inform the public that in big bold letters, that this is just a regular, regulation change, that's, that's the important thing here. We've been meeting the regulations up until now, it's just been changed, so now we have to make changes to get there. I think once, if that's all put in, like the mayor said, letters, people understand it, I think that's the point that we have to get across to everybody. I think that's, I think that'd be the important piece, is to flare out to everybody and see it, so.
Any questions? Motion. Move by Wade, taken by, sorry, move by Dan, taken by Walter. Here is all council receives report from Asmat Associates dated December 14th, 2017, is presented circulated and further, council authorizes the communication to be delivered to residents affected by the new Ontario drinking water standard. So, how would our discussion impact that last one?
Yeah, I was just going to ask the same thing, is do you have an opportunity to allow staff, because there will be a timeframe issue here where we have to put this notice out prior to the regulation change, or not going to have an opportunity to come in front of full council again until after that timeframe? So if there was a opportunity to have staff or a member, two members of council or the staff on a review of and approved...
Yeah, yeah, point, yeah.
We need somebody to be able to say, "yes, we're okay with that," I guess.
Fair enough. Randy?
I guess I'm prepared to make a verbal or a written motion that the mayor be given authority to approve a re-running of that letter.
I could be part of that.
How's Walter see it? I'm comfortable with mayor understanding.
We had, I understand it's time sensitivity, quick emails back and forth.
So, what this document is, I'm not sure if you remember, in 2013, we had a similar document that however only covered three main items, roads, water, and sewer. Since that time, changes have been made to the federal gas tax funding. We stipulated that we included all of the eligible asset categories that can apply to federal gas tax funding corps. So this report includes nine categories, which includes roads, bridges, water, sewer, storm sewer, buildings, equipment, land, and vehicles. And at the end of 2016, when this report was prepared, our total assets were approximately $92 million. The report on pages eight and nine gives some recommendations for what we should be doing in the future, gives 10-year recommendations and 15-year recommendations to phase in in order to cover the replacement cost of the assets that are included in this report at this period of time. However, we have to remember that this, this document really is a living document that changes daily with everything that we do in the town, from our sewer linings to our new subdivisions and all of that infrastructure, to the Sister Street redevelopment, everything that we do changes this document every day. So to, it's just a, what do you call it, a picture in time or a report? Snap, shot, snap, yeah, shot. The recommendations and the calculations that Citywide has given us are reflective of the data that is available then and now at that point. Our households have changed, something that council's going to have to decide upon at some point is level of service that we want to set for certain areas, because there are more changes coming down through new regulations between 2018 and 2021 that are going to make us be more accountable as far as asset management and capital assets go. And this is another reason why staff has indicated that GIS tech person would be beneficial to be on staff full-time, not only to plot all of our infrastructure through GIS mapping, but to also assist us with conditioning the, the assets other than age-based. And in order to do that, we need to know where the assets are underground in order to be able to rate them, so that our report card can look better.
Or what?
It should look better. I, I believe this is a worst-case scenario mainly because it is based on predominantly age.
But we don't know if ratings are long, right? Few years in here, our ages are too short.
And, yes, and that is the other thing too. Exactly. Our useful life scenarios that we first set up was when this PSET project became, came into effect in 2008, were probably not as useful as we, as we thought they could have been. Our condition ratings changed, as I, as I said, our households have increased, so some of the percentages that they've given you in this report are, you know, 200 houses behind as well. So, I know on one of the, one of the pages, they talked about a tax increase, that's not reflective of the actual, that would require people to set aside the proper amount of...
Yeah, they're recommending 1% tax increase per year for 15 years, I can't imagine that covers the deficit, but, well, based upon this.
I, I forget which page, but one page said, we have 21 million in assets which are poor, very poor, page eight. I don't even think I have it somewhere. Right, so let me...
Well, that's page, page of age, I hear, right?
Page eight nine give a lot of valuable information. The first half, the first part on the bottom of page eight is dealing with the general operating budget, and then the recommendations on the page nine are with respect to water and sewer, because they fund themselves, they're not part of the tax, the tax base, so.
Yeah, I'd imagine if I, most other small towns in Ontario, we have similar scorecards, we all wrestle with the same problems.
Yes.
So, even though this looks bad, and it's not good by broad standards, I think we're exactly same old, they're going to be selling in Ontario.
And the other thing too is, is our new subdivisions have not been adopted yet by the town. We've adopted three phases. We've adopted three phases in Greenbrook, which I'm not even sure they made it into this report. But without infrastructure and that data to come live and into the report, it will change our report.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, so the new hire, the objective is to go away completely from age-based data, or even with the hire, you're still gonna have to rely on it to some extent?
Some of it will still be age-based, but there shouldn't be any reason why, with all the sewer inspections and all the camera work that we've done, we have all of that on video. So once they locate where it is, and then locate where it is in our data, which is just usually a lot of list of valves and, you know, catch basins and all kinds of things, once we're able to identify that and perhaps change the useful life of some of the infrastructure as well. And that's where some consistency is needed, is to track this annually. And right now, we have three different people, contract people working on it. Their perspectives and objectives are at all the same. So to have one dedicated staff person sitting, doing this, working with the people that they need to work with to get this information into Citywide for us, that's where the consistency will benefit in the end as well.
Sorry, Wade and Walter?
I mean, I get that this is something that's mandated by the province. We have to go through and do it every year. But, I mean, from a practical point of view, is it actually useful? I mean, does it inform our decisions when it comes time to prioritize projects and stuff? Do we use it as a tool?
Yes, actually we do, yeah, yes. Because it goes in line with the Roads Need Study, and I think they mentioned a couple of other things in the back here, the Roads Need Study, and some other reports that Citywide actually looked at to come up with this report.
So there is some analytical value once all the numbers are printed?
And crossover between reporting. And some of the government grants, for example, gas tax, require that we have to have this, or you don't qualify for the funding.
I think it's probably painful setting it up at the beginning because it's a new initiative that started maybe 10 years ago. I think just now it's starting to see the benefits of it. It does really keep the information. If the ages are right, it does provide valuable document for a teacher budget. It's taken a while to get off the ground.
It has, and we're not, I'd say we're about the same stage as most municipalities in the area. Some of the larger municipalities, they hired a whole department. We're so separate from each other.
Walter, any questions?
Yeah, in regards to the buildings, all of our buildings are age-based, including our newest building, the Pluxton Way buildings. Everything is age-based, fire hall.